We are now recording and ready to proceed at your convenience, Deputy State Auditor Cordova.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. The public hearing on the proposed 2022 version of the Audit Rule 2.2.2 NMAC will now come to order. The time is 1:30 p.m. on February 28, 2022. Thank you for joining us digitally through Teams or by telephone for this virtual public hearing. We request that all in attendance please remain on mute unless you are speaking. You may use the closed captioning feature in Teams by turning on live captions under the settings at the ellipses. This hearing is being recorded. During this rule hearing, members of the public will be given the opportunity to submit data, views, or arguments orally or in writing. Individuals wishing to provide public comment or submit information at the hearing must state their name and any relevant affiliation for the record and be recognized before presenting. Any individual who provides public comment at the hearing may be questioned by the Office of the State Auditor for clarification purposes or at the discretion of the agency by other persons at the hearing. If you wish to speak and are attending digitally, you may use the Raise Your Hand function, put a comment in the chat, or speak up during any of the many prompts for comments throughout today's hearing. Members of the public attending telephonically may speak during any of the prompts for comments which will follow each proposed change or public comment. In the interest of efficiency, the Office of the State Auditor may exclude or limit comments or questions deemed irrelevant, redundant, or unduly repetitious. During the hearing, the Office of the State Auditor may ask follow-up questions and provide comments for clarification purposes, but generally will refrain from providing opinions or engaging in discussion regarding the merits of the proposed rule change or any public comment presented. All members of the Office of the State Auditor participating remotely will identify themselves whenever they speak and be clearly audible. The Office of the State Auditor will suspend discussion if the audio or video is interrupted during this hearing until connection is restored or free from interruption. With those introductory remarks out of the way, I will turn the hearing over to State Auditor Brian Cologne for opening remarks.
Well, good afternoon, and this is where my team gets really nervous because they give me a script and said, "We want you to stick by the script because we want to be efficient, and we know you have a tendency to keep on going." So I am going to try and do that. Let me just say it's really been an honor and privilege now in my fourth year to serve you as your State Auditor. I hope that we have met or exceeded your expectations. And if we haven't, we have tried to do mediation or remediation on those deficiencies and at all times been responsive. That is my number one goal at the Office of the State Auditor is to ensure that my team and I are always available to you, and that extends to everything, whether it be reaching out to one of our team members for a specific conversation or even after today's audit rule hearing. If you have further concerns, comments that you'd like to provide to us, you're always welcome to reach out to us anytime. So thanks to each and every one of you for being in attendance today and participating in this really meaningful process. It's one that we don't take lightly at the Office of the State Auditor, and it's one that we think has helped us strengthen the Audit Rule, both in its application and its aspirational goals for accountability in the state of New Mexico. I want to thank all our stakeholders, especially my team members who've joined me today, of whom many are on this call. I think I greeted most, except maybe Darla and Lucia. I didn't see you earlier, but nice to see you both. Thank you for joining us at this hearing. And maybe Lisa, as you get ready to proceed, we can give it an opportunity for our team members to greet all the participants along with their roles in the office. So I'll ask you to be prepared to do that, team members. Maybe you can raise your hand so it's easy for Lisa to find you amongst this great group. You know, together, we can make a significant impact through the financial oversight and accountability we provide, and I'm grateful to all of you for your diligent efforts. I look at this call and see many familiar faces of those who've provided meaningful and substantive feedback on our Audit Rule over my term as your State Auditor. We'll continue, especially as we come out of this pandemic, to adapt. Many of us, well, I'm sure all of us, have had to pivot, change the way we approach the important work that we do, and I think most have risen to standards, by anybody's standards, to have exceeded expectations. I'm proud of our office and every one of my team members who've been with me by my side, many from day one and some more recent, but all contributing greatly to the mission of our work to provide accountability transparency as we do celebrate excellence in government. For purposes, today's hearing, I respectfully request that members of the public keep their feedback limited to the proposed rule changes and the topics that we're discussing regarding the Audit Rule. Now, that's not to squelch any feedback to our office. It's just to limit this particular hearing to the topic at hand. If you have other feedback for me or for the office or about the work that we do, please do not hesitate to contact us directly. My email will be in the chat along with my phone number and the office phone number of 476-3800, and you're welcome to contact us anytime. Let's see. And of course, as is in front of me here, we look forward to continuing to engaging with the public and all our stakeholders, both during this hearing and moving forward, and appreciate every bit of your input. This will be my last Audit Rule hearing, but just know that if I don't see you or speak with you again between now and the time my term ends in just 10 short months. Having been in the legal profession for now 20 years, I have enjoyed every one of my colleagues in that profession. But now I have become intimately familiar with my colleagues and professionals in the financial sector, and I couldn't hold you in higher regard or esteem. You have all shown me your diligence, your care for our state of New Mexico, and the resources that we are to protect, and it has been a real honor and privilege of working with each and every one of you, both internally and externally. Our over 70 independent public accountants who are partners in our work have provided amazing services and have always helped guide me to do the right thing, and I'm grateful for every bit of it. So know that this has been an honor and privilege. Welcome, Stephanie, our director, who's joined us recently. Thank you for joining us today, Stephanie. We're going to have all the team members recognize or introduce themselves, rather, now as I conclude these remarks. So please raise your hand if you're part of Team OSA, and I will turn it back over to Lisa to direct and be the air traffic controller on who's on this call from Team OSA. Thank you, everybody. I look forward to hearing from you and continue working with you for the next 10 months and one day.
Thank you. Thank you, Auditor Cologne. It's always a pleasure to follow your introductory remarks. You really get everybody built up.
I stayed mostly on script, Lisa. I did pretty good.
You did. I was very impressed. Thank you. I really appreciated. I will be introducing a few members of our staff, and then I will open the floor to allow other members from the Office of the State Auditor to introduce themselves. The first person I'd like to introduce is Deputy State Auditor Natalie Cordova and Jesse Gallegos, our General Counsel, myself as the Director of Compliance and Quality Control, and Lynette Kennard as the Financial Audit Division Director. And with that, I'll open it up to anybody else that would like to introduce themselves. Darla, you have the floor.
I'm Darla Brewer. I'm the Audit Supervisor for the Financial Audit Division.
Thank you. David Smith?
I'm David Smith. I'm a senior auditor with the Guardianship Program.
Sean Beck?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sean Beck. I'm the Special Investigations Director for the awesome Office of the State Auditor.
Stephanie Teas?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Stephanie. I'm the Director of our Government Accountability Office. It's great to see you all here today.
Lucia Santini?
Good afternoon. My name is Lucia Santini. I'm an Audit Manager in the Financial Audit Division.
Tinlay Dolcar?
Hi, my name is Tinlay Dolcar, and I'm Staff Auditor at Financial Audit Division. Thank you.
Kasum Adakari? Kasum, you're on mute. If you're trying to talk, there you go.
Sorry about that. Hello, everyone. This is Kasum Adakari. I'm Audit Supervisor in Financial Division Team, and welcome, everyone.
Thank you. Joe Cruz?
Hello, everyone. This is Joe Cruz, I'm the Financial Audit Supervisor with the Financial Audit Division.
Thank you. Elena Tichero?
Good afternoon. I'm Elena Tercero, Audit Manager and interim CFO for the Office of the State Auditor.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. It's really great to see so many of our team here today and interested in this Audit Rule hearing. Let us move on to a brief explanation of the purpose and format of today's hearing. We'll begin with Agenda Item 3, which is the Discussion of Purpose and Format of the Hearing. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Kerr. I will be acting as moderator for this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is for the Office of the State Auditor to receive public comments on proposed amendments to 2.2.2 NMAC Requirements for Contracting and Conducting Audits of Agencies, better known as the Audit Rule. Public notice of this hearing was published in the New Mexico Register on the Office of the State Auditor's website and on the Sunshine Portal. Copies of the Proposed Audit Rule are available on the Office of the State Auditor's website and via the Sunshine Portal. A public comment period began on January 25, 2022 and concludes with this hearing. The Proposed Audit Rule is promulgated pursuant to the Audit Act, NMSA 1978, Section 12-6-12, which requires the State Auditor to promulgate reasonable regulations necessary to carry out the duties of the office, including regulations required for conducting audits in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Additionally, NMSA 1978, Section 12-6-3A, requires audits of agencies and local public bodies to be conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and rules issued by the State Auditor. The Office of the State Auditor updates the Audit Rule each year, and we really appreciate your participation in the process. Regarding public comments, the Office of the State Auditor received no written comments during the public comment period, which formally ended on February 28, 2022, as stated in the Notice of Proposed Rulemaking. However, we will certainly take any comments during today's hearing. The State Auditor will rule on the admissibility of the exhibits offered for submission during this hearing. The Office of the State Auditor does not follow the rules of evidence. See, no written comments at this time. Let us move on. Again, there will be opportunities for public comment throughout today's hearing. Regarding the format of this hearing, here is how we will proceed. I will give a brief overview of comments we received on the Proposed Audit Rule. If any, we will then open the floor to comments from any member of the public on each particular topic and hear all comments on that topic before moving to the next topic. Following discussion of those specific areas, we will move through each of the proposed changes to the Audit Rule, then open the floor to comments from any member of the public on each particular proposed change and hear all comments on that proposed change before moving to the next change. After the discussion of comments received and proposed changes, I will open the hearing to take comments from any member of the public on any topic related to the Proposed Audit Rule. Any person can comment, read from, or submit a written statement. Any written comments will be identified as an exhibit and will be placed with other original exhibits if admitted. All comments will be considered in preparing and recommending the final form of the Audit Rule. Not all comments will result in changes to the Audit Rule. The volume of comments and their ultimate effect on any revisions could have an impact on the proposed publication date of the Audit Rule. After all comments and questions are complete, I will close the hearing. Let us proceed with the discussion of the written comments, if any, the Office of the State Auditor received during the public comment period. Agenda Item 4, Discussion of Comments Received. I will be skipping this section today as no written comments were received during the comment period from January 25, 2022 to 1:30 p.m. today, February 28, 2022. If you have any written comments you would like to submit during this hearing, please submit them now. Otherwise, there will be lots of opportunities for verbal comments throughout today's hearing. Agenda Item 5, Discussion of Proposed Changes to the Audit Rule. I will now discuss each proposed change in order of occurrence. I will describe each proposed change, and after each proposed change, I will open the hearing for comments or questions related to these sections from the audience. Please raise your hand, add a comment, or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment or if you have any written comments to submit on a particular proposed change. When I recognize you, please begin by stating your name and the agency or organization you represent. 2.2.2.5 NMAC. Effective date is now March 22, 2022, which is the date of the new Audit Rule will be published. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. We added a definition for abuse to more closely align with generally accepted government auditing standards GAGAS and with federal internal control standards. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7f4 NMAC. Added a definition for fraud to more closely align with GAGAS and with federal internal control standards. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7n4 NMAC. Added a definition for the acronym NMCD, which means the New Mexico Corrections Department. Renumbered subsequent subsections as 2.2.2.7n5 and 6, respectively, due to the addition of the definition for New Mexico Department of Corrections. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7n5 NMAC. Non-attest engagement definition updated and to remove the term audits from the definition. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7s4 NMAC. Added a definition for the acronym SLO, which means the State Land Office. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7w1 NMAC. This subsection was updated to add a definition for waste to more closely align with GAGAS and with federal internal control standards. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8c2 NMAC. This subsection was updated to reflect the OSA will recognize for immobility by adding the statement, if applicable. The sentence now reads, "The firm does not have a current New Mexico firm permit to practice, if applicable." The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8f7 NMAC. This section was updated for clarity. The comment, including DFA, was removed from the first sentence. This now reads, "The agency is responsible for getting the contract signed and sent to any oversight agencies for approval, if applicable." Contracts are now required to be uploaded. Also, contracts are now required to be uploaded in OSA Connect and not to be sent electronically to the OSA. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7f8 NMAC. This section was updated for clarity. The following comment was added. Submission prior to the due date shown below is permissible. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8cdmg NMAC. These paragraphs were updated for clarity and in the case of paragraph D, to allow more time for contract execution and interim work to begin. Item C, Incorporated Counties, of which Los Alamos is the only one, Local Workforce Investment Boards and Local Public Bodies with the June 30 fiscal year-end that do not qualify for the tier system, May 15. Item D, Councils of Governments, District Courts, District Attorneys, State Agencies, June 1, and the State of New Mexico Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, July 31. Item G, Agencies and Local Public Bodies that do not qualify for the tiered system with a fiscal year-end other than June 30 shall use a due date 30 days before the end of the fiscal year. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to these proposed changes. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. This subsection was updated for clarity as it relates to OSA Connect. Audit Contract Requirements. The agencies shall use OSA Connect at www.osa-app.org to submit the appropriate audit or AUP engagement contract. Only contract templates generated through OSA Connect shall be accepted. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. This subsection was updated for clarity regarding the other section of a contract. This section now reads, "In the other section of the contract, additional services shall be related to the scope of work, but not included in previous categories in the Compensation Section. Such costs shall be fully detailed and sufficiently described the required audit-related work and the other provisions section of the contract." This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8n1 NMAC. This subsection was updated for clarity as it relates to OSA Connect. The agency shall use OSA Connect at www.osa-app.org to submit the appropriate draft audit report or AUP engagement, draft audit or AUP engagement contract amendment. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8n3 NMAC. This subsection was updated for clarity. The State Auditor shall also consider the Auditor Independence Requirements of Subsection L of 2.2.2.8 NMAC when reviewing contract amendments for approval. The OSA shall review amendment requests and respond to the agency and the IPA within 30 days of receipt. This hearing is now open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9a1d NMAC. Revised to add the State Land Office and the New Mexico Corrections Department to the list of entities with a due date of November 15. The hearing is open for comments or questions related The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9 A1G NMAC. This paragraph was updated for clarity, replacing including with and. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9 A1M NMAC. This paragraph was added to accommodate agencies that require a report to be released by a specific date, board meeting, federal reporting, etc. This now reads, M, any agency that requires its report to be released by any specific date, E.G., due to board meeting, federal reporting, etc., the earlier of its agency due date, or one month prior to the requested release date. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 A1CV NMAC. This sub-paragraph was updated for consistency, replacing form with template. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 H1 NMAC. This subsection was revised regarding responses to referrals from IPAs to add a requirement to send such responses separately from any draft report and address to the attention of the OSA Special Investigations Division by email to This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 K4 NMAC. This subsection was removed. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 L2A NMAC. This paragraph was updated to refer the IPA to the most recent revision of GAGAS versus a particular site and to include the statement, "IPA shall consider including findings from special audits and annual audit reports." This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 L5 NMAC. This subsection was updated regarding when approval of a professional service contract is required. This now reads, "If an agency has entered into any professional services contract with an IPA with the scope of work that relates to fraud, waste, or abuse, and the contract was not approved by the state auditor, the auditor shall report a finding of noncompliance with subsection L of 2.2.2.8 NMAC." The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more comments, or no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 R2 NMAC. This subsection was updated to include reversions in a supplementary information schedule or in a note to the financial statements. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change.
Auditor Cologne?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, Lisa, you're doing a great job. You've been cranking it out for like 20 minutes now. And I wanted to make sure that raise hand function was working, just in case. You doing okay?
Oh, yes, I'm doing fine. Thank you.
Okay. Keep up the good work. We're all still here. We're listening.
Thank you very much. If somebody raises their hand, Jesse or Natalie will bring my attention to it, so.
Okay. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 U NMAC. This subsection was modified to clarify that dispositions include trade-ins or lost, stolen, or destroyed items. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 W NMAC. This subsection was retitled Inventory Certification. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 W1 NMAC. This subsection was updated for clarity to ensure compliance with 12-6-10 NMSA 1978 and additional requirements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.12 A6 NMAC. This subsection regarding reversions to the State General Fund was updated to add clarity regarding where reversion shall be identified by including or in the notes to the financial statements following in the financial statements. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. One second, my page skipped around. 2.2.2.10 A3 NMAC. This subsection regarding specific criteria to be considered in planning and conducting governmental audits, accounting for special capital outlay appropriations, financed by bond proceeds, was updated to remove paragraphs A and B to remove outdated references and avoid future outdated materials. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.12 B2 NMAC. This subsection pertaining to audits of housing authorities was updated to remove the provisions requiring discrete presentation or an exemption and replace such provisions with reference that IPAs shall use GASB guidelines as found in relevant GASBs to determine the correct presentation of the component unit for alignment with 2.2.2.10 A1 NMAC. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.12 B5 A2 NMAC. This sub-paragraph was updated to require an electronic version of the Financial Data Schedule, or FDS, and the audit report instead of a hard copy. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.14 B6 NMAC. This subsection was deleted as the OSA no longer requires out-of-state firms to maintain a New Mexico firm permit to better align with 61-28B-13 NMSA 1978, which allows out-of-state firms to practice without a New Mexico permit if they meet the requirements of the statute. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 A1N2 NMAC. These subsections were deleted to remove the definitions of fraud, waste, and abuse to the definition section at 2.2.2.7 NMAC. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.16 B1N2 NMAC. These subsections were updated to include tier levels for added clarity. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.16 B3 NMAC. This subsection was added to replace the remainder with more for clarity. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.16 K NMAC. This section was updated to refer the IPA to the current government auditing standards as opposed to a specific revision. This hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. At this point, I would like to open the floor to take all comments related to the audit rule and to the proposed changes that we just introduced. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment or let us know in the chat if you have any written comments to submit. When I recognize you, please begin by stating your name and the agency or organization you represent. If you are appearing by telephone and wish to make a comment, please do so now. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next item on the agenda. Agenda item six, other comments. I will now open the hearing for general comments or questions from the audience. Does anyone want to comment on any other aspect of the proposed audit rule? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment or let us know in the chat if you have any written comments to submit. Please begin by stating your name and the agency or organization you represent. At the end of your comment or question, I may ask office staff to respond to your comment or answer any questions before moving to the next comment or question. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
You know, I think the only comment I have, Ms. Kerr, is that you should join Stephanie in your formal training as an audiobook reader. That's very well done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next item on the agenda. Agenda item seven, closing remarks. Thank you all for your thoughtfulness and your comments and presentations and for your input. The Office of the State Auditor will carefully consider each comment prior to the finalization of the audit rule. I will make one last call. Does anyone have any other comments or questions related to the proposed audit rule? Well, thank you all very much. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will adjourn this meeting. The time is approximately 2:18.
Let me, Lisa, let me just, as always, as the person in the room who wants the final word, let me just thank everybody again for joining us. Thanks to my team. I know that with these changes, our stakeholders know that we do take this process very seriously and that we believe these substantive changes will continue to allow us to do our best work. I look forward to hearing from you anytime. I thank Lisa and Jesse and Natalie and all the folks who really leaned in on this process, so I appreciate it very much. I will continue to try and figure out whether it's GAGAS or GAGAS and get all the acronyms right by the time I finish my term as your state auditor. It's been an honor and privilege to serve you, and thanks for joining us today. Thank you, Lisa. Job well done.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned for Lisa Kerr.